I want to welcome everyone to the Thursday, December 17th, 2020, meeting, regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Irvin?
President.
Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Present.
Commissioner Lewin?
Present.
Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chairman Wu Tsui?
Here.
Chair Wermuth?
Present.
Okay, six members present, we have a quorum.
May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on the west side of the City Council Chamber on Thursday, December 10th. Our meeting has been posted in accordance with state law.
Thank you. I'm going to take a motion on acceptance of the agenda. When we get to the agenda, we're going to be continuing Item 2C to a date certain. Do I have a motion on agenda?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Lewin. I would move approval of the agenda.
I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We're at public comment, and this is a time that's been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items, the items of general interest, and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of hearing. We have only, we'll have two public hearings tonight, so people can testify now or they can wait until the item is before us. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak?
No, Madam Chair, we have no requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. We have no consent calendar items. The first matter that is before the commission is Item 2A, Core Palm Springs LLC doing business as living out for amendment to an approved planned development district to convert condominiums to 122-unit apartments and a revision of the tentative tract map. Can I get a staff report, please? And this item has been before us before, so if the staff report can discuss the items that were sent to AAC and the response to our questions.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start off with just a few slides. So, the Planning Commission reviewed the project. Get them to advance. There we go, okay, sorry. So, the Planning Commission reviewed the project on November 18th, and they had a series of items that they wanted the applicant to review. One was a community garden, size of swimming pool, look at parking reduction, building elevations, carport design, the distance that someone would have to walk from the parking lot into the building, add shade trees along pathways, and then screening of the parking lots itself. So, the Planning Commission sent the project onto the Architectural Advisory Committee, and they met December 7th, and they reviewed revised plans, which we're going to review in just a minute. But their recommendation to the Planning Commission was an approval with the carport design to be reduced in height, add trees between the street and the southwest building end of the building, and reevaluate the design of the building ends. So, the application that was sent to the Planning Commission in the packet includes revisions that the AAC requested. So, when looking at the plans that are before you on this slide, this is a comparison of the approved versus what they're proposing to the Planning Commission today. And we're going to go into some specifics. One is that they've added the bigger pool, which is there. If you remember, there was questions about the size of the pool, and at the time, they had not figured out exactly what the size of the pool was going to be. But here, they've redesigned it. They've moved it farther away from the building a little bit. There was concerns at the AAC that the height of the building would possibly shade the pool and then make it nonusable sometimes of the year. But the project architect has stated that it is farther enough away that it will receive sun most of the year. They've also added landscaping between Takowitz and the building itself. That was AAC recommendation. They've also worked on a carport design, which we will go over in just a minute. Here, this is the design of the carport. When it went to the Planning Commission last, this design had not been flushed out, but this is what was presented to the AAC. And at the time, they didn't have these dimensions that showed the heights. So, the height of the carport is variable. It goes from eight feet to a maximum height of 10 feet. The design is a simple post and beam, steel post and beam, with a mesh roof and then a mesh covering that will face Hermosa Road. The other design issue was the building ends, and I want to point out that the drawing that's in the middle of each of these slides is the end that faces Takowitz, which would be the most visible end facing the street. So, the top was what the Planning Commission reviewed back in November. The bottom is what was approved by the Planning Commission a year ago. And then, this design is what the AAC recommended to, through discussions of the AAC, this is what the applicant has come back with to the Planning Commission today. So, I'd like to point out, and the project architect will go over more detail than I will, but you'll notice that this end that faces Takowitz, they've added Corten cladding to the side of the building, they've added a series of windows on the stair tower end, and then the balcony railings and the overhangs are consistent in the same. One of the recommendations of the AAC was that the side that faces north, which would be the vacant lot or the parking lot of the convention center, also be treated, and they are adding the stonework on the stair tower itself there. So, just some, looking at some examples of what the design will look like, this is the previously approved, but you'll see that the stairwell has the stone on it and then the Corten cladding they've put back. So, when the Planning Commission saw this in November, this is not what was proposed, but now they are proposing this design. Once again, this was a slide that the Planning Commission, AAC, has seen, and this was the approved, and will be similar to what they're proposing today. There's also, in your packet, there are elevation showing the building itself, materials, which the Planning Commission has approved, they're all the same materials. And there was a question about the public plaza that's proposed at the corner. This is a slide or diagram of what the corner public amenity parklet would look like. So, Chair, the Planning Commission needs to make several findings in order for you to approve the conversion of the condominiums to apartments. Those findings are in your staff report, there are three. So, staff believes that the project is conformance and substantially in conformance with the approved project, and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conversion to apartments. So, that concludes my report, and the applicant will have a presentation when they come on.
Questions for staff before they ask? Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Thank you. Glenn, could you put up the AAC comments again, that slide? No, the whole list, sorry, they looked at. See, we're getting an echo, so it's a little hard to concentrate. But one of the items, number six, was that addressed by AAC?
The AAC did discuss it. It was brought up as a recommendation or an item to look by the Planning Commission. However, they have added the carports. The applicant will be able to address maybe some items like valet parking for residents or other mechanisms that they could use to get folks to walk in shade from the farthest parking space into the building.
Okay. And during the planning-- This echo is kind of distracting me. During the Planning Commission discussion, I brought up, I think we talked about Section 14 requirements for shade trees along Takowitz, if my memory serves me right. And there was a discussion, or maybe even a recommendation or requirement, that they provide shade trees along Takowitz. And I don't know if that's been done here, but it looks like it probably hasn't. Is that to your recollection?
So, I remember there was a lot of discussion about shading the walkways within the project itself, and the applicant has added a lot more shade trees in the little pathways within the development itself. Along Takowitz, there are requirements to provide trees. There are the, as you know, Takowitz is a boulevard and has, the Section 14 has requirements on the types of trees that they would plant. So, there are some large trees along the dog park to shade the park itself and the sidewalk. There are trees that are between the sidewalk and the southwest end of the building. And then, there are, you know, the retail building has some trees, a large tree in the parklet itself.
Yeah, I was particularly concerned about people walking along the sidewalk at Takowitz and providing shade trees along that pathway, but I can discuss that with the applicant. Thank you.
Are there other questions of staff? Commissioner Hirschhorn, in answer to your question about the parking, it was discussed. People looked at it. I think four of the commissioners, they asked questions, they didn't make any recommendations. And there was one dissenting vote, and that was because of the site plan. And the dissenting vote was that he wanted a different, a different site plan for condos, I mean, or for apartments, with the parking having been moved. So, I don't, it, and Commissioner Song, I think, was in attendance. I know I watched it. Is that generally your feeling as to what happened regarding the parking?
That's correct. I believe the mood was that it was not conclusive, but there was still the question. But it was not brought back into the list of recommendations, as you see here on our report, unfortunately.
There being no other questions of staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. The applicant has attendance.
Lauren, you're muted.
There we go. I thought I might have been the feedback, so I muted myself. When we met in, when you met in November, you addressed eight points and others that Glenn has reviewed with you, and we have a slide, Glenn, do you have that to be able to put up? A series of slides. So, again, to review the items that were discussed by the Planning Commission and were sent to the AAC, the idea was to add a community garden to show the actual swimming pool. Commissioner Song commented that the project is overparked by about nine spaces and suggested we might remove some of those spaces and put in additional trees. The AAC was asked to review all of the building elevations, which they did. We were asked to provide detail to the AAC of the carport design, which we did. The parking lot location and distance to entrances was, in fact, addressed, and I can address it again when we get to that section of my presentation. To add shade trees along the pedestrian paths and to require a four-foot-tall wall of berm along Hermosa as required by the code. At the AAC, all of these items were discussed, the site plan, the vegetation, the elevations, and out of that came that they wanted the carport design to be reduced in height. I think before, it was like nine and 12, that was what we were proposing, but to reduce it to eight and 10, to add trees along the Takowitz end to shield that side from Takowitz, which we've done, and to enhance the building elevations to make them, as they were concerned, less plain, and to add some of the architectural elements that we had in the building before and other parts of the building other than the ends, which was primarily the Corten steel, the stone, and some bump outs. So, the site plan that Glenn showed and that we're showing you on the right is the plan that we're proposing now compared to the plan that we submitted last month. And then, the next slide, Glenn, is the site plan, just the site plan itself, so that you could take a look at it. And what I'd like to do is go through various sections of the site plan and address what we've done in each of those areas to address both the AAC comments and the commission's comments. So, the first slide is the north amenity area where the pool is. We have designed the pool now. It is a 2,400-square-foot pool. I have checked with other properties of a similar size, senior apartment properties, and this is substantially larger than many of the pools in those competitive properties. We've added the community gardens in the top right, you can see, and we added shade trees. It doesn't show the number five, but there are shade trees all along the walking paths and in the west area as well as where it's numbered. Moving on to the next slide is the Takowitz Canyon setback. As you might be, you might remember, the setback is substantially greater than it was as a condo project, but the commission was concerned about its view from the street, and so, and the AAC was as well, so we've added, we've more than doubled, I believe, the number of trees at the Takowitz end to kind of shield the building from Takowitz. The next slide is the west amenity area, and the only comment from AAC on that was to add shade trees along the walking paths, which we have done in this iteration. The parking area, which had the most comment, I would say, of the commission and AAC, we have added the four-foot wall and hedges along Hermosa. As it relates to deferring the counting part, the parking count, I would prefer to defer that because I'd like to see how it operates. I mean, it's possible, we have nine extra spaces over code, and it's possible that we may need those spaces. If not, people will be parking on Hermosa. So, that would be my request, to let me see how that operates before we make that decision. I will say, you know, I hear developers say this all the time, but this is not like the shopping center where, you know, they're really interested in getting you in the store, and they're not so interested in landscaping. We're designing someone's home, and if we don't need those parking spaces, I think as a good operator, we would take them out and put in trees because we want to enhance our residents' experience, and if we, if we can do that, we would do that. There was a lot of discussion at planning, less discussion at AAC about the distance to walk. I think last time, we were asked what the distance was from the furthest space on Hermosa to the front entrance, that was about 315 feet, I believe. Of course, we would not be assigning residents those spaces. The residents will be assigned spaces closest to their entrance. And we did not, we failed to point out last time that there are three entrances to the building for the residents. There's one at the Takowitz end with an elevator, there's one at the Hermosa end with an elevator, and then there's the main entrance. And for, wherever we would park residents, no resident would walk more than 230 feet from their car to the residence. But as I've discussed with others, this is a, primarily a management issue in my mind because I can't have my residents having a bad experience and not being able to get to their apartment comfortably. That's, that would be self-defeating for me as an owner and as a manager. So, I have as great an interest as maybe the Planning Commission does, if not more, in making sure that my residents don't have that experience. This is intended to be a high-end building in terms of quality, and so, we intend to have a concierge, a full-time concierge, at the front desk, and we could work, we'll work with whatever ideas we, our management has to make sure that the concierge has the ability to take keys from someone and move a car if that becomes necessary, to take in the groceries for the tenant, and so, or to have golf carts, whatever the experience that we need, we will, we will do. But to commit to valet parking, which I know has been on the minds of the commissioners, is a cost that ultimately will be passed on to the residents and hasn't proven itself to be necessary, a full-time valet, something like that. So, I would ask that you rely on us to make that determination as good managers, and that's how we've, we would like to deal with that, and that's how we presented it to the AAC as well. The next is the carports. The carports are designed based upon an inspiration from the Ascena project, the walkway at the restaurant, there is this kind of open covering. It looks open, but it's quite stunning, and our designer designed something based upon that. It's a very simple structure, will give some height and some variation so that it's not like a mass of carports. And as, the only comment, the AAC liked the design, the only comments that they made were about reducing the heights, and we have done that. And finally, the elevations. We have the slides showing the elevations of what they were compared to what we're proposing now. At the AAC, there was some questioning about the exterior elevations, but frankly, all of the conversation was about the ends of the Takowitz and the Hermosa primarily, and as I said, they found that that was too plain compared to the rest of the building, and they asked us to add the stone and the Corten steel and the bump outs, which we have done. And there are slides to show, again, Glenn, if you can show the last slide, that will show what, the variation that we've added to this plain ends as the AAC has required. That's my presentation. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for the applicant? I have one or two. What are the, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Oster, can you explain the reason from, going from 105 to 1?
22?
Yeah.
Yes. First of all, these are apartments which will be somewhat smaller, so we could fit more apartments in, and frankly, it's a revenue issue. This project has to be economic, and at 105, we couldn't make the economics work, whereas at 122, we can.
Okay. Do you plan to have a onsite living manager or staff?
Yes, well, they won't be living there, but we will have onsite management.
During operation hours, so eight to five?
Yes, and we'll have security in the evenings.
This is--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lauren's partner, but we will also, we'll have a significant staff because the concept here is to also provide meals for the residents and weekly housekeeping, so there will be a significant staff as well as various people who will organize events, and a social director, and a fitness director, a wellness director. So, there will be people at this facility during the day and in the evening because there will be evening dinner, and so, there will be a significant amount of additional benefits that will accrue to the tenants with their rent, as is typical with a number of other similar projects here in the valley.
Mr. Oster, what is your concern about people parking on Hermosa?
No, I'm just saying that if we don't have enough spaces and guests and the retail, to serve the guests and the retail as well as the residents ultimately, if we took out the nine spaces, I'm just saying that they would end up parking on the city street. It's not a concern, I'm just, it's an observation, there would be no else for them to park.
Right, but the tendency would be to park wherever is closest to the unit, right? So, that would be the tendency, right?
Yes. Well, they're going to be assigned spaces for the residents so that they'll, they'll be closest to their unit.
The other question is, the entry driveway, not the first one for the business, but the main driveway off of Hermosa, did your design team, was there any concern about having the back of tree, the back of cars pulling out on that entrance driveway?
I'm not sure what your question is, Commissioner. It's the same driveway that was approved before. We didn't modify that driveway, I don't believe, did we?
It was, before you had a palm tree-lined, major sort of boulevard with, lined on both sides, there was no parking in order to lead to the rotary. And now, your design is you have the back of cars parking 90 degrees to that entry driveway.
They would, this is Paul, I do not believe they would enter or exit those parking spaces by coming into the driveway. They would have to come through the circle and then into the parking area so that there would not be, they would not be backing out onto the driveway. I believe that's certainly the intent. So, there would be landscaping still along the drive, significant landscaping.
That's not what it shows.
Robert, can I get the slide up?
Is Jerry there?
Give me--
It shows that he's there, Jerry?
Yeah, I was muted, I couldn't get it on, okay.
Right.
Hi, this is Jerry Sherman, the architect. Yes, to answer your question, that is, that is correct, but we didn't feel, oh, I'm sorry, I'll start my video, apologize. We didn't feel that it was that detrimental because we don't feel being apartments-- Um, we didn't feel that it was that detrimental, uh, because we don't feel being apartments uh rather than condos that we are going to have, a lot of heavy traffic there, and we don't feel it's really um any different than any typical uh parking and driveway condition. We didn't see it as a, as a real issue.
Okay. Um, then the next question is, on the um west wing of the building, facing east, uh, obviously the west wing will be three stories, yes?
Yes.
Um, you have, along that, uh, you have about five trees on the west side of the sidewalk. Was, was that intentional, or did you mean to put more trees to uh screen the massiveness of the building?
Do you want me to an- I'm sorry, Lauren, should I answer?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm just pull, I, I, I couldn't see it in the small form, so I'm pulling it up now. Um, well, I don't know, if you, if you look at the site plan, our proposed site plan number eighteen, that's where the screen hedges are, uh, can you kind of orient?
No idea.
What, what trees you're talking about? Uh, on the east side, right?
Uh, yes, Mr. Sherman, were you able to see the spotlight or the pointer?
Yeah, I'm trying to lo- uh, it's very small.
Oh, and she, he's talking on the south side, Jerry.
Oh, on the southwest side you're talking about. I'm sorry, I was looking on the east side. My apologies.
Oh, I could have said it the wrong way, too. So, south side of the west wing.
Yes.
Especially closer to the rotary or roundabout. Were you, are you planning to have that, those many gap trees, trees, or were you, um, that was just a, a rendering and you actually had more planned along the south side?
No, the, the, the trees that we're showing now, what were proposed, was actually a comment by AAC to add what we previously had. So what we are showing here is what we're actually proposing.
Okay, because along, along the east wing.
Okay.
South face, you have many more trees and palm trees.
Oh, along the, okay, okay, you're talking the fr- the, the long faces of the building. I, I apologize.
No, no, Mr. Sherman, Mr. Sherman, you are correct. I, I'm, I'm trying to look at the composition of the building to the landscape, to the sidewalk, to the street. So when I'm looking at the east wing and I'm looking at the west wing, they have different designs.
Yes. Uh, so on the east wing, for example, um, we, uh, yeah, with the parking lot along Hermosa, we have a small parking lot there. Uh, do you see that on the east side?
Correct.
Yeah, so when, when you get there, that's, that's obviously uh dictating where we could put trees uh along there. Is that, is that what you're referencing to? I, I, I apologize, I'm a little confused.
Do, would, would you consider pushing the building west to increase the landscape on the south si- uh, on the east side of the west wing?
Um, the problem with that, where we're playing with geometry here, is by, by pushing west or even north to, to increase areas on those sides, uh, we're running into uh setback issues on the west property line and the north property line, if, if, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Right, but you have, you, you have more than enough on the south property. Uh, you actually increased it when it's not needed.
Yeah, you mean al- along Takwitz on that?
Yeah, yeah.
But that was a recommendation of AAC.
Yeah.
That was what they wanted.
They, no, no, I'm s- she's, uh, uh, Maria's talking about the setbacks and, and where the building is situated, uh, Lauren.
Oh.
Um, no, no, the, the idea, part, part of the problem was that, uh, again, it's geometry. As we pull, if we pull south, if we reduce, say, the Takwitz setback.
Correct.
Uh, then we're creeping further into the parking lot area. We're reducing all of those pinch points, and we wanted to create buffers along the building as much as we can from the parking to the building.
Well, and that's exactly my goal, to create more buffer between um the driveway and the building.
Well, maybe, uh, to give you some scale, the distance on the east wing, for example, from the driveway to the building is probably a good fifty feet, almost fifty feet there. At the furthest point, and, and obviously it gets narrower as it, uh, as it uh turns in, as it gets toward the center of the building.
Uh, Mr. Sherman, can you say that one more time?
Yes, if you, if you, uh, refer to the site plan and if you look on the east wing, uh, say, I'll, I'll use a, a reference number, number sixteen on the plan there, um, that setback uh from the building to the driveway there is a good fifty-plus feet away. And the patios are about sixteen feet at the narrow point, so we still have almost thirty feet from patio wall to, uh, to driveway approximately. So it's quite a large area, actually. Uh, I'm sorry, go on, Maria.
No, I, I, I understand, I, I appreciate that clarification. It's more about, for example, I, 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 I understand Mr. Um, Oster's concern, but for example, if, just imaginative, right? If those kind of spaces were not there, that would be additional landscape space for more trees so they could be in composition to the building as part of the layering.
So you're talking about, say, the parking by number twelve there? If they weren't there, that would be landscaping?
No, it's not by number twelve, it's, um, it's on the west wing.
Oh, on the west wing, oh, those are the handicap stalls there.
I understand, but the concept is that if you were to rotate or minimize the, I mean, reduce the setback, you can create more buffer space between the driveway and the west wing.
Um, but it, it's a great question, great comment, uh, but because of the geometry uh and the angles, we've actually played with the angles, uh, even when we rotate and push, um, there's different impacts that occur on different portions of the site uh when we do that. It, 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 it looks like it could be easily done, but we have run into some issues with, with parking and how the building hits the property lines. Uh, so I guess what I'm hearing you say is that you'd like a bigger buffer on the west wing from the parking to the building itself, similar to the east wing?
Yes, to be, to be honest with you, uh, just out of the brain hair idea is that if you were to make the west wing longer and make the north wing shorter, okay?
Yeah.
You could push the build, I mean, you could push the building to create that buffer. But, Mr. Sherman, you do, you, uh, you understood correctly my intent.
Yeah.
And, and I have two more questions, and thank you for explaining that. Um, one is that, is this, did you do a study where this four-foot berm, berm, when people are driving or people are walking, they will not see the parking?
No, we, we haven't done that study yet, and, and I think what we, what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lauren, is that it wasn't decided whether it will be a wall or a berm. I, I think part of that was still open for discussion, uh, that, that they would like one or the, obviously we have to provide one or the other, and.
And, and, and we've agreed to provide the trees as well.
Yeah, but I think what we, what we have landed on as well is that as we're doing our grading design on this, that if we do have some excess soil, we would like to do berming, and then we will, we will look at, uh, obviously, uh, blocking the parking. But I would like to also point out that on the parking str- on the parking carports, I should say, uh, all the ends there have screens that landscaping will be planted in front of it, too, as well, if you look at the uh carport design.
Um, yes, and, and point, uh, there, your, your rendering shows as if there is landscape in between the stalls running east-west, but in reality, there is no landscape running east-west.
Well, that was one of the, that, that's a great point. I, I appreciate you bringing that up because I think it, it wasn't discussed, um, that one of the requests we would, we were going to ask for is that, uh, because of the carports, uh, putting shade trees in these, um, in, uh, next to the carports, there'd be a real big issue, uh, because the, the trees wouldn't be tall enough, we'd have a lot of conflicts and a lot of mess. And I think what we would like to do is propose, because of the carports, to actually put landscaping opposed to the shade trees as an alternate.
I believe Mr. Malacar told us that that would, if, if they, if the carports were approved, that that would come as a matter of course.
Okay.
That, that the shade from the, from the carports would replace the trees, the shade from the trees would, would be acceptable, and that, uh, we would have low shrubbery in between as opposed to trees.
Uh, Mr. Sherman, would you be open to, uh, congregate the tree islands in the landscape space so they are substantially bigger and you can have a tree grove rather than seeing a tree every five spaces and not know if that tree is going to make it or not?
Um, it's a great, great point, uh, and I, and I'm going to defer part of that to, to Lauren, but I guess my, my question is, by code, I thought we're required to have these every five stalls.
I believe it's every ten, um.
Right. The, the code requires every nine, I think, spaces, there has to be a, a ten, every, there has to be a finger for landscaping.
Yeah, and they're nine feet wide, these planters, right now.
Right, but the spacing right now, I believe, is every five spaces.
Oh, Lauren?
I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I, I'm six of one half, dozen of the other, as long as there's adequate parking for everybody and, and it's beautifully landscaped.
Uh, Paul, I mean, I, I, I don't have an objection to that, um, uh, because we won't reduce parking, we're just swapping.
Right.
Where the parking is versus the landscaping.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Is that what you're saying, Maria?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so the, so the trees have a very chance to be together and actually create a much better mo- uh, mass in, before you see the building.
Okay.
That would, that would be fine.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I think the only qualifier I would ask on that is that, uh, again, it's, it's math and, and size, is that if we run into areas where we can't get them all congregated, where we might have one island, if, again, we could, we could, uh, trade the trees for the, uh, gra- uh, landscaping in the planter, because I think there is a real conflict with the, with the carports and trees.
Yes, and I, I would, I would ask that you balance the trees and the carport structures, that it not all one or all the other.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and, and last question is, did you consider trying to bring a, a vertical surface on the south side of the carports? And vertical, I mean either louvers or screens?
Um, right now, the, the fascia that we're showing is eighteen inches in the front, um, right now, and, and the problem we have is because, actually, when we had it at nine feet, I would have, I would have probably, um, invited part of that and looked at that, but because they wanted us to lower it, now we're at, we're at eight feet, um, and again, I can't go much lower than that, uh, for clearances by code.
I don't think so.
So, I don't have a lot of opportunity to bring anything vertical down any further than that.
So your fascia is eighteen inches deep?
Yes.
Okay.
And so it, it will provide, it will provide, you know, a little bit of shading there, it's a solid, solid surface.
Okay. I believe it may be top-heavy, but that's just my commentary, and I appreciate for, um, for entering in the dialogue with me. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Hirschbaum, and then Commissioner Luen.
Okay. Um, so I, I'm not seeing a full-size screen for the slides. Is there a possibility of doing that?
You have to, um, you have to untan it on your, um.
Okay, okay.
You have, you have to untan the, the image.
Got it, got it. Can, can you put up the, uh, uh, Takwitz side elevation? It would be the, uh, southwest elevation with the elevator, uh, tower?
It, it's the middle slide that I'm pointing at here, that's the building elevation.
Yeah, so my question is, to the right of the, uh, elevator tower, uh, there's an element with Corten and then the lower part of that, I'm guessing, is that stucco?
Yes, that is.
And then, um, is there an el- uh, uh, a change of plane between the Corten and the stucco?
Just the, 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 the thickness of the Corten, and maybe I should clarify, the Corten is really a powder-coated Corten-looking steel.
So it's just brown powder-coated steel?
Yeah, but it, it will have a Corten look to it, they actually simulate Corten, so there is some modeling on it.
And are they panels divided up, or is it like one big sheet? How, how's that achieved?
Well, they are, they're ribbed. This is a ribbed, um, uh, Corten, so if you see the vertical lines in there, they're about fourteen to sixteen inches apart. So they do come in sheets and they interlock, and so you don't see really any seams on it.
Okay. Uh, and then, so why would you not have a change of plane there where you change materials?
Well, you're just, the change of plane there is really, uh, more the substructure and the build-out of the, of the Corten, so there will be a slight change of plane, but not an exaggerated, it's just material change. There still is a brown coat, a plaster behind it, and then the thickness of the, of the metal panels.
Okay. So if we asked you to pop out the Corten by another six inches, would that be a problem?
Um, I'll throw it up to ownership, I mean, I, my, my only comment against that is that, that these are the elements, that's why we, that's why AAC wanted to plant more trees there, is that that lower portion will, will not be seen very well, actually, from the pub- the general public.
Well, that's not the only place it occurs, though, is it?
It, it occurs on the, uh, it occurs on, uh, the east side as well. And again, that side, where we're having the hedges and the trees and the walls to hide, uh, that lower portion to hide the cars, you wouldn't see it, and there's carports there, too.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, I think I would be open if we had to do that, uh, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but we would be probably very open to it.
Yeah, the, the stone.
A problem, I don't see a problem with that.
The, the stone that you picked, is that, is that a cultured stone, something that's man-made, or is that real stone?
Uh, well, right now, it i- it is going to be most likely a man-made, but it is, uh, uh, simulating an ashlar that was approved already from the city.
I, I, I don't know who approved it, but, um, I'm, uh, concerned that it's not looked like stack stone. I mean, stack stone is what the elevation shows, but that's a very nineteen-eighties, nineteen-nineties look. And I, 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 I'd like to see, uh, when you choose exactly what you want to use there, go back to AAC or Planning Commission for approval, because right now it's a little vague, you don't even know what you're going to use, and I'm totally against a stack stone, and I think that would be a, a big mistake. I think that's going to set the design back, you know.
It's, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that before we can pull a building permit, we need to go back to AAC for substantial compliance.
Commissioner Hirschbaum.
So our intention to have them. So our intention to have them review all of that.
Yes. Commissioner Hirschbaum, the, the project does come back for final development review, uh, through the AAC and the Planning Commission, so a lot of these, uh, details will be shown on almost construction documents that you will see again.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, excuse me, Michael. Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, uh, if Glenn could show the material board, it does show the stone we're looking to use on there.
Well, hopefully, um, we can actually get a real sample. I know we're doing everything by Zoom, but if we can get an actual sample of it rather than a photograph of it, um, it, it'd be very helpful. Um, in terms of, uh, the shade trees, I, I believe I commented on, uh, top width, uh, uh, and I'm more, I'm actually focusing on the public realm rather than the private walkways within the development. And there's some concern that I would have about, uh, walking on the sidewalk on top width and making sure that that area is shaded. Uh, can you, I don't know what kind of trees these are, and maybe I don't need to specify it now, but, but my, um, I would be looking to have a shaded walk on that, on that top width sidewalk when you come back with your final landscape plan.
Um, may I comment on that?
Sure.
Oh, great, thank you. Uh, along top width, again, the, the top width portion where the retail and dog park are, uh, that was, that was previously approved, and if you look along there, we have about eight shade trees, uh, indicated there, right along the sidewalk.
It's the specifics of it, but I, I, I'm concerned that the sidewalk is shaded. And, and when you come back with your final, um, uh, landscape plan, uh, hopefully, you'll indicate that that, that's the case.
Okay.
That's all I really need to say now.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Lewin, you had questions?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and gentlemen, thank you. I think that when your project is built, your residents are going to be very happy. There's a lot of really wonderful amenities in this project. So, um, I wanted to ask, and, and if staff could bring up what's labeled as Section eleven, see that, but in the back of the packet, we have one or two renderings that are kind of three-D renderings of that corner. Glenn, do you think you could bring that up for us, so we're all looking at the same thing?
Robert, can you go to the previous slide presentation?
Oh, that one, one back. There we go. Thank you. So, in our last meeting, we, this is labeled as a public plaza, and that was one of the things several of us focused on, I know that, that I focused on, uh, that this would be a place to offer respite and shade for people that would be walking in our desert heat. And specifically, uh, we mentioned to have benches, shade trees, plural, and a water fountain, the ability for somebody to drink. And I see that in the staff summary that was given to AAC, that really wasn't spelled out. And when I look at this corner, I, I gotta be honest, as much as I like what you're doing everywhere else on your property, this doesn't look like a public plaza to me. This looks like an ornamental, spiky garden with a tree. And it was my understanding that this would be the kind of public benefit area for people to sit, gather, and specifically, sit, gather in the shade and be able to drink some water. Did you at all explore that idea, or was it overlooked, or do...
No, it was, it was not overlooked. We, we, um, we did not change the, uh, the plaza. Uh, we didn't really look at changing the plaza because this is an, what we're seeking is an amendment to an approval, and the plaza came about as a result of the need of our having a, a dog park and a dog, a, a, a dog facility that was required, uh, by virtue of the location that we're in, that we had to provide a public benefit just for that purpose. And so the balance of, you know, what we were seeking as a modification and the, uh, the public benefit was already weighed by AAC, by planning, and by the City Council. And we are not seeking any modification to any of, of anything that had required that public benefit. So we didn't focus on the public benefit.
Right, so, um...
And changing it.
Commissioner Lewin, so th- this project, um, this, um, plaza was, uh, worked through with the planning, the previous Planning Commission and the AAC, uh, and there were conditions of approval that included benches and, um, fountains, uh, and shade trees. So this is, um, just a sort of, uh, rendering of what it could look like. As we mentioned, the final landscape plan will come back to AAC and the Planning Commission for final review. Uh, and those items were actually, uh, listed as conditions of approval. So when they come back, we will go through each of those conditions and make sure that they're on the plan.
Okay. Thank you for that. Could, maybe I could ask you a couple of follow-up questions, 'cause I'm a little confused. Um, one, is the dog park going to be open to the public or just to the residents of the community?
Just to the residents of the community.
Okay.
And, and to, and to the people who are using the pet facility. If people have their pets there during the day or overnight at the dog hotel, those, those dogs will be using that as well. So to that extent, it's open to the public as customers of the, of the, uh, dog facility.
Then, uh, Glenn, I heard you say that the area that we're looking at actually is conditioned to have these amenities, and I hear the builders, the applicants, say, no, no, what we're looking at here is what's actually gonna happen.
No, no, that's not what I said. That's not what I said, Commissioner. What I said was, we did not look at it further, again with AAC this time, because it's already been approved, and whatever the conditions of approval were at the, that have already been approved by planning and by the City Council, we will adhere to those conditions.
If I could clear up the confusion, so this, this park that we're looking at now is the public. The, the dog park, and we have slides of it here, is not open to the public. This is fully enclosed, gated for the residents of the, um, apartment complex and folks that are boarding or grooming their dogs at the facility right next to it.
Mm-hmm. So, but Glenn, if you could just help me out, on the corner there, if you go back to the corner view, is that going to end up being a place with shade trees, bench, and a water fountain, or is it going to look like what's being presented here?
This is just a rendering that was, uh, that's a placeholder for, uh, a, a final project that you will review, that will include a bench, a water fountain, and any landscaping that, uh, the AAC and Planning Commission, uh, finally, uh, falls on.
Does anybody have the conditions of approval that relate to that, that, that we could...
I, I, I don't need to take more of the time. I, I hope that when this comes back, this looks like a place where the public can sit with benches, shade trees, and a water fountain.
We, we, we hear you. We hear you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I, I yield my time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there other questions from other commissioners? Uh, then I have a few. Um, the, Glenn, do the trees on, um, this is the old conditions, do the trees in the front, uh, meet Section fourteen requirements on top width?
The proposal that is, is before you, uh, was reviewed by the previous Planning Commission, was approved, and that, um, that analysis was done and completed, and it does meet the Section fourteen plan. So there have been no changes from what was previously approved, uh, by the Planning Commission earlier.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions for the applicant on the walkways, and even though the dog park isn't in front of us, um, dog parks are successful when they have water in them and benches. Uh, do you have plans for dog water fountains and benches in your dog park?
Yes.
And do you have that and dog stations throughout the walking portion of the property along your walkways?
No, we have, I remember you raising this last time, uh, Madam Chair, and I don't believe that we've shown that, but we certainly could do that. Uh, you're, you're asking on the west and north sides where people walk, will be walking their dogs. Yeah, that would, that would be something we would be happy to include.
You'll find...
And I, I think the residents would want it, so...
Yeah, you'll find people clean up when, um, when you have dog stations and they don't when you don't.
Right, right, exactly, exactly.
Um, okay. Uh, the material walking out, walking out to the swimming pool, what is the material on the ground?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, those are, uh, it's paved area, the initial walkway there, yes.
So, uh, what I would like to see is shade there. Uh, in the summertime, paved material can get so hot that it burns your feet. And I, I do believe you have to have some shade to walk out through that area. I'm assuming those, those look like palm trees. I don't know what your trees are, or whether they're shade trees.
Those are, those are actually, uh, shown as palms right now, but, uh, Paul, Lauren, uh, we could put shade trees here, do you think?
Sure.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could change that out.
Okay. And then, um, actually, I think this building looks nicer. I just wanna say that as a comment, but I think it looks better as an apartment building than it did as condos, uh, because of the treatment of the first floor.
Thank you.
And, um, so the concierge, uh, if you do not want a valet, are you intending to have a concierge from somewhere like seven in the morning till nine or ten at night to help people with groceries and parking?
I don't know the exact hours, but they would be a full-time concierge. And if, and if our tenants, and if our tenants required it from seven to nine, we would do that.
Uh, we may end up putting a requirement in this, especially to deal with the parking section if you don't want a valet, so, uh, I...
Well, that's fine. That would be fine.
Yeah. I'm kind of used to seeing somebody at front gates from about seven AM till ten. I don't know how late people would be bringing in groceries. Um...
And we also think that people will be bringing in groceries less because meals will be included to a certain extent. We, we had discussed that in the past, that there'll be less grocery carrying.
Possibly. People cook.
Yeah.
Uh, in this city, people seem to enjoy cooking, so, um, but we, uh, I, I do think we're gonna have to look at the hours on that. Um, and I think those are all of the questions that I have. Look, oh, the other one is, are any of your trees fruit trees?
No, I know Commissioner Lewin had raised that, and we discussed it with our landscape architect, uh, and were advised that the maintenance issues, as well as the vermin issues apparently around fruit trees, was something that we wouldn't want our residents to be exposed to. So we're hoping that the, uh, vegetable garden, the community gardens will add to sustainability, but we're advised against having fruit trees.
Hey, I think that's, that's it for my questions. Anyone else? There being no other questions, the matter is before the commission. Um, as we get to decisions on this, I may call you up at the, uh, prior to a vote on a motion. Thank you very much for your, um, your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The matter is before the commission. Uh, we have, we have a couple of issues on this. The very first issue is one we didn't get to last time, which is changing the requirement from solar from two-point-two to what is now the California, um, California requirements. Glenn, what are those right now, currently?
Um, so in the staff report, there's a list of what the, the code is requiring now, which is one-point-four-seven watts per square foot for each dwelling unit, and then it's point-zero-eight for all common areas such as the lobby, gym, or multipurpose room.
And this is something that we're currently requiring of all developers?
Uh, to meet the California Energy Code, yes. That's, um, every residence, uh, multifamily and single-family needs to meet those California Energy Code requirements.
And so we're no longer requiring the higher requirement that was a placeholder, assuming, and that was a placeholder, assuming that's where California would get?
Yes. The, when the Planning Commission originally approved the condition, uh, this was not, um, adopted, set in stone, let's say, and, uh, you wanted to make sure that there was adequate solar, uh, power for the building, and that was the number that the Planning Commission came upon.
And Madam Chair, if I might just jump in, with the adoption of the new Green Building Code, the City Council policy for the provision of solar has been superseded.
That's, that's what I'm assuming. So we're being asked to change this to meet what is now the Green Building Code. Uh, just, i- in any motion that's made, we're going to have to include this. I'd like just a show of hands from people that you're fine with the change, and then I'll have you a show of hands if you're not fine with the change. Uh, Commissioner Hirschbaum, I can't see your hand. You, you're not fine with the change? You are. So that, uh, all of us indicate that we're fine with that. So Glenn and Flynn, any motion that's made will include that. Um, the, and Glenn, can it, can you help me with exactly what we have? We have to approve a minor amendment to the revision, uh, and a revision to the tentative track map.
Right, that's, that's correct. So you're approving an amendment to the Plan Development District to convert condo- from condominiums to one-hundred-and-twenty-two apartments, and then a revision of the track map, uh, which would be a one-lot, uh, track map.
Okay, so, uh, I'm assuming it's a one-lot track map. Just to ask, are people going to have, uh, problems with the conversion? This, is, can I get a general sense from people as to whether you're comfortable with approving the track map changes? And just a show of hands. Miss, okay, so, so we're there. So now we're looking at the, um, amendment to the Plan Development District, and if there are any conditions people wanted to, and the matters before the commission, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, and I'm going to add conditions as people mention them. So, um, I don't know if there's a second. Commissioner Song?
Uh, it, it's not a second. It's, uh, it's something that I wanna share, that I'm, uh, I, I'm having a very hard time with the finding of harmony relations with adjacent development, um, about having the parking on top width. I think there's been a great effort of trying to make the project better, um, but I am, um, I am, can't seem to find that on top width on one of our boulevards that we're going to have, uh, this field parking, um, along top width.
Uh, for the applicants, this is not before you right now. Thank you. Uh, it's before the commission. So we've, we, generally, uh, two of the items we might, would be able to approve, but the, the specific change is before us. So Commissioner Song has indicated that, um, is it the first item that we need to find in terms of the, the findings? In terms of the, the findings?
Number two.
Number two.
Madam Chair, on page five of your staff report are the three findings.
I'm just... Which page is it, Glenn?
Uh, page five. So, the, the analysis of the amendment to a planned development district, there are no specific findings, however, uh, there are, um, the specific requirements that the planning commission would need to make, uh, on, which has to do with, is it generally consistent with the originally approved project? Uh, do, do the development standards of the proposed amendment, are they substantially in conformance with the approved project? And are the conversion of the condominiums advances the goals of the city?
So, you, what you're saying, Maria, you have issues with number two. Would you like to speak to that?
Uh, yeah, so, the, the, the first application, can everybody hear me okay?
No.
The first application, is that better? Okay, the first application had on Tacwitz, the setback from Tacwitz, had a combination of about a third, parking and driveway, and then the rest was this, uh, walkway and landscape buffer to balance sort of the story between what happens on Tacwitz to all the way to the building. This project proposes for that setback area to be all parking. I understand there's a business building, I understand there's a dog park. So, therefore, the, the balance on how the project is, or the building is designed facing Tacwitz, is where I find that it's not a design which, uh, it's inconformant to what, how other projects have been done on, along Tacwitz, with also Section 14.
Maria, what you're saying is that you, you would, are you basically making a motion to deny being unable to make that finding?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, Commissioner Hirschbein, and then Commissioner Marutse.
Well, I, I'd like to just, uh, discuss with Commissioner Song that, uh, statement. I don't disagree with it. I, I'm not quite there yet, though, and I just want to kind of drill down on that, if that's okay. Um, do you think that, I guess what's mitigating it for me, and I just want to know if you think it's also a mitigating factor, is as you're driving down Tacwitz, or even walking down Tacwitz, it seems to, you're not gonna experience the parking lot because of the built, the commercial building and then the dog park. It just, it seems like it's gonna be out of your, your range, your sight. Um, and if that's not the case, I kind of want to understand that, because that's, I agree that it's a sea of parking on Tacwitz, and that's not a good thing, but then I'm thinking this mitigation of really not being able to see it, unless you're passing by that front driveway, uh, next to the building, next to the apartment building itself, and you could peek in there. So, I'm just trying to understand whether there's something I'm missing in that, if you could maybe talk me through that.
Uh, Commissioner Hirschbein, those are, um, points of evaluation that I have made. When you're driving east, or when you're driving west, the tendency, when we look at these exhibits, are two-dimensional, as if we're standing dead center in front of the building. But when you're driving west, um, and you, you're going through Hermosa, you will have this view corridor, especially with the, uh, plaza of the sea of parking, and the same thing would happen when you're driving east, and you see the driveway on Tacwitz, um, that there is this view corridor into the parking lot as well.
So, it's, it's as you're approaching from the east, heading towards downtown, and before you get to the corner of Hermosa, you're looking into that parking area, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So, before, the, the original design had that same view corridor, but it had this balance of three to one of landscape to parking, and therefore, I felt that there was much more, uh, this landscape absorbed the parking to make it more miniscule.
Right, okay. Okay, well, thanks for clarifying that for me, I've got to think about that. Is there anything else you want to point out along those lines?
I, I want to say I appreciate, because most of the time, I'm not very clear about what I'm saying, so therefore, having the commissioners ask me the question really gives me a second chance to, uh, probably clarify the craziness that goes in my head. Thank you.
Madam Chair, as a point of order, there is a motion on the floor, but you have not yet identified the conditions of approval. What I might recommend is that you proceed with the conditions of approval, see if there is a second for the motion, and proceed in that manner.
We have two motions on the floor, so I don't know if this one supersedes mine.
No, it does not. There has not been any action on your motion yet.
Okay, is there a second for my motion? I will go through conditions. Commissioner Marutse.
I do second that mo, your motion.
Okay.
And I don't have a comment, but I can wait until you, um, have the conditions included.
First, the first conditions would be to accept the recommendations from AAC for the changes that they've made. Um, I would have included additional landscaping or shade trees leading to the pool. Uh, I'd like to see, when this comes back to us, benches, seating areas, and rest areas, uh, and, and the park, I agree with Commissioner Lewin, but since it's in the conditions, the park done to the original conditions of approval. Um, and I'd like to see, uh, very minals, minor point, dog stations and drinking fountains in the walking areas. Um, that I haven't, I don't think, I'm not inclined to reduce the parking, uh, because some of the units are singles and they're, uh, the parking requirement is .75, but this, this project may be parked, there may be a car or two cars per, uh, per unit, given the rents and the, um, the fact that it's active living. So, I would keep the additional parking in place. I would require that if it's, if we don't have a valet, either we have a valet for parking, or we have a concierge on duty that's there from seven in the morning till nine in the evening. Uh, and I would require that there be live-ins, a, at least one live-in manager. So, those would be the conditions that I would impose on this. Um, I don't know if you have additional conditions, Commissioner Marutse?
No, but I wanted to make a comment.
Please.
When I look at this side-by-side comparison of the approved versus proposed site plans, I just don't personally feel that there is all that much difference in terms of what you would see when driving on Tacwitz, looking north, or even northeast or northwest, depending on which way you're coming from. Because of the building, of the, you know, because of the, um, dog, uh, facility and also the dog park, I mean, there is a moment, I'm sure, when you're driving on Tacwitz and you're looking towards Hermosa, you'll see more parking, but I don't think it's sufficient enough to deny the project, and I, I like what el, everything else that's been done, so I, I don't think I could agree with that.
Uh, the comment I would make on my motion is that if this was coming to us as a new site plan and not a modification, I would rather see parking on both sides of the, um, eastern wing of the building. I think that would be a much better site plan. Um, it would be more convenient for the residents, uh, you would have, but because this is coming to us, having been engineered and designed, and so much time put into it previously, I did not feel like we needed to impose an entirely new site plan. Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, I tend to agree with you. Um, I, I think that, and in the last meeting, I did in fact suggest looking at putting the parking in one of the other quadrants, or thirds of the building. The applicant is far along, and I do think that the substantial tree coverage, the dog park, the retail, I think it will do a lot of screening. I, I think Commissioner Song is not wrong, but at this point, this project is so far along that I, I would be in support of the motion as it was made, uh, because I think it's a quality project overall, and there are certainly other places on Tacwitz, such as the Renaissance Hotel, which have far more asphalt and parking in front of it, and, and this doesn't, in my mind, really approach that. There is a lot of shading and screening, I think. Um, I wish I would have heard more about Commissioner Song's remedies before we got to this point, but I want to signal that I would be in support of the motion, um, that you've made with the, uh, the amendment by Commissioner Marutse. I'm sorry, I yield my time, if that wasn't clear.
Other members of the commission? Commissioner Irvin?
Um, I, I would also, um, like to maybe say if, uh, if the, um, commission took a look at the aerial site, um, you can, you can see from the aerials, um, the living aerial site, you can kind of see that it, it blocks it a little bit, I mean, I think there's some trees that, that, that are going to be there as well, that, that will be able to block if you're coming, uh, from the airport on Tacwitz, um, where you won't be able to see that much inside. Um, if you are coming from the other area, I can see how that opening would be able to see, but if, you know, um, we're talking about the corridor, the entry into Tacwitz, I, I don't think it would, it, it would look that bad. It's, we got quite a bit of, um, you know, buildings and landscape in there, um, I just, I don't think it's that much of, you know, I would agree again that, you know, pretty far into the project, that that would make that much of a difference, and, um, you know, I, I wouldn't want to hold that process up for that.
Are there any other comments? Uh, can we call the question? Oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, the, the comment about, um, the AAC made comments, the applicant made revisions, and those are the revisions that we're seeing today. And, um, I would like to make the, um, I would like to make, uh, the comment about the design of the ends of the building, um, about considering, uh, having the, uh, the short wind that, the wind that's northwest as well as northeast, um, be similar in composition. Uh, those will be seen quite a bit from the street. Uh, but, again, that's my comment, and then the second one was, if the project goes through, if you would consider clustering the trees on the tree islands, because what happens with trees in the middle of car parking and asphalt is that if you only see one trunk, it's not gonna make it, and it's gonna window, so having a formation of trees will make a better impact. And, um, I, I fully respect the comments of the other commissioners. If the idea of this very luxurious and expensive rental project and having four, five rows of cars before you see this amazing building in composition, uh, both in city planning, um, it's, it's, it's not what I consider to be a harmonious project. Now, having said that, um, Commissioner Lewin is perfectly right about, um, myself not offering solutions, um, but I was really hoping that with the commentary that was, uh, received before, that the applicant, um, could have have tried different solutions. And, um, that's the end of my comments.
So, are you offering, can you, uh, be clear, you're offering some amendments to the motion, and articulate exactly what they are?
So, one is zone the carports and the trees in the parking lot for a, a balanced design, so therefore, if they're going to shade with carports 50%, and then they're gonna shade with trees 50%, then it's clearly defined and the trees are, uh, gathered together. That's one. So, right now, I believe the proposal is that the, uh, tree, three lanes of cars are being carport. Um, so if they are, then can you reduce maybe 20 to 30%, and then have the other area be designed with trees and tree islands?
I'm comfortable with that amendment. Commissioner Marutse? So, that amendment is accepted, and is, is there anything else?
The second one is the, uh, building end design on the east end, is east wing end, and then Tacwitz, uh, west, south end, if they could be more consistent with one another. I believe one of them has the row of windows, and I think that acts to the, uh, composition.
Can you, can you, Glenn, could you put those back up?
Um, the, the slides, okay.
Just, not the slide, but the, um...
There we go.
This, okay, this.
You see the middle?
The first one is, is what? The middle one is?
The middle one-
Middle one is Tacwitz.
The middle one faces Tacwitz.
The middle one is Tacwitz.
And this one, Hermosa.
This is Hermosa, and the back one?
That's the north.
And that faces the convention center?
Yes, that faces the parking lot.
Oh, good point.
So, that should also have design on it, shouldn't it?
Good point. So, all, all three of them should be, should be consistent with the articulation that was made on Tacwitz and with, uh, building end.
I, I'm comfortable with that. Commissioner Marutse? Commissioner Marutse, could, do you accept that condition?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I said yeah, and I gave a thumbs up.
Oh, okay, I wasn't, I was still seeing the item on the screen. Um, do you have any other conditions?
Uh, yeah, the last one is that when, when the planning, when the TDD final package comes in, that specifically the size of the veneer, stone veneer, is precisely shown and scaled, uh, for our end samples, so that we can fully understand what that treatment is.
And I believe that Commissioner Hirschbein wanted the corten-like material to pop out a little bit, so we would include that. Can you tell me what the pop out is? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Well, I think there should be a minimum of six inches.
Six inches, okay. And then the other thing is, when it comes back to us, a full treatment of the, I think it was in my own- it was in mind, of the park, the parklet area, per the original conditions, and the trees along Tocqueens being full shade trees. And with an illustration that they, that they do shade, they link and shade this, and will shade the street. Anything else? Glenn, can you read back our conditions, or Flynn?
Oh, wait, um, okay, Flynn's going to do it.
Okay, so condition number one is relative to the solar requirements that they conform to current adopted green building code requirements. Number two, you are recommending approval of the track map modifications, no modifications there. Number three, on the amendment to the approved planned development district, number one, you accept all of the AAC recommendations. Number two, that additional shade trees be provided from the building to the pool area. Number three, benches, seating area, dog stations, and drinking fountains shall be provided in the walking areas on the site. Number four, the plaza at the southeast corner of the property shall be designed to the original conditions of approval, which includes bench, drinking fountain, shade trees. Number five, in Louis Vuitton, the applicant shall provide a concierge on site from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Number six, that there be a live-in manager. Number seven, relative to the trees in the parking lot, that they be clustered in the islands rather than spaced every five spaces as they are currently shown. Number eight, on the ends of the buildings, they shall be consistent with the design shown on the Tocqueens frontage. Number nine, that on the final PD, PDD package, the stone veneer be precisely shown and depicted on the elevation drawings, and a physical sample be provided. And then number 10, on the core ten panels on the ends of the building, there shall be a six-inch pop out between the core ten panel and the stucco. So those are the conditions as we have them listed.
Before we take a roll call, may I ask the applicants if they have any comments?
Yes, I think, I think we do. As it relates to the ends of the buildings all looking the same, I don't think that that's something that we can do. I'll ask Jerry, but the layouts of the units are different, and so where the windows are placed, the windows are placed. If we start laying out the, re, rehabbing to lay out the units, that's a substantial amount of architectural and design work that we're going to have to do to make that happen. I don't even know if it's possible to happen. On the north end, the, the concern about the consistency, the, the wing is not the same, because there's no elevator. Uh, uh, correct me, Jerry, is there an elevator on that end?
Two things, on the north, there's no elevator, and the stairs do not go to the roof. That's why the other towers are taller, required by the fire department, but the third one was not, does not have to go to the roof.
So that's why. That consistency of making the wings look the same, I'm not sure what it achieves, but it's, it's going to add substantial dollars to our design and delay the project even further to achieve, I'm not sure what. Secondly, I, I just checked with somebody who is a longtime manager of facilities in, similar to this, of this kind of project, senior active living facilities. None of them have a live-in manager, and I don't think we would commit to do that. I don't think that there's anything else that I saw in the conditions that I would have an issue with, but I'll defer to Paul and Jerry as well.
No, I would agree with Lauren. I think, I think those are the issues that we have. I think all the rest of them are reasonable, and we can adapt the plan to accommodate all of those concerns and, and comments.
One question, one question for you, and I'll, I'll let Commissioner Hirschbein comment. Do you have, will you have 20, some way that people can get to you 24 hours a day?
Yes.
For, for building problems?
Yes.
So I'm perfectly happy to change the live-in conditioner, condition to...
On-call.
So, so an on-call system for building problems 24 hours a day?
That's reasonable.
That's fine, that's fine.
And, um...
I agree with that.
Uh, can you just, do you want to talk about the building ends? Is that?
No, I, I have something else I wanted to bring up. Is that okay?
Yeah, just then, let's go to the building ends first. Commissioner Song, if they do a treatment that's as consistent as possible, without changing the design of the units, does that work for you?
Yes. I, I believe there were stair towers on all three of them.
Yes, but, but the, the north one does not go to the roof. That's why the height difference.
But we're not talking about the height difference, we're talking about what we tr, we made a treatment as to suggest that there are windows or trends.
Yeah, there, 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 again, I, we're, we're looking at the site, and we're looking at the exposure of all elevations, and the north elevation, I don't necessarily agree, will have the impact that has been stated before, because the property behind us is vacant, and it will get developed, and it won't be the front of a building, it'll be the back of a building or a side of a building. And that the north elevation probably will be the most, the least visible of all the elevations, and I would hate to spend money, more money. We put the stone on, and we felt that was already pushing the envelope on that tower, and on the Tocqueens side, which is the most visible elevation of those towers, we added the window on that side because that happened to be the widest tower, because of the configuration of the stairs and elevator and trash room. And so that's why we added that slit window, and it, it was much more consistent with the original design, where the one on Hermosa, again, has actually a notch in it, it's not the same tower, it's a whole different configure, configured, it had to do with site conditions.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I did change the one item. Commissioner Song, do you want to make a change in that motion or not?
Um, I, I accept the motion of, of creating artic, articulation or trim that would reduce the amount of stone veneer. They don't have to put windows, but they could look at it from a bit more detail or I, I'll retract my condition.
You retract it? Okay. Commissioner Hirschbein?
I'd, I'd like to propose a condition to the, to the motion, to require, and I'm not sure if it's there or not, but I didn't see it, toilet facilities adjacent to the pool area. I think we had that originally, and I don't see it in the revised, but I'd like to make it a requirement.
Uh, can I speak to that? Oh, everybody froze. Can I speak to that?
Yes, before we accept it.
Okay. The, we've had substantial discussions about toilet facilities at the pool, and we have set things in the building so that the toilet facilities in the building are in accordance with Riverside County Health. They are within the 300 feet of the pool, and we believe that our residents would be much happier going to the bathroom in, within the building bathrooms than having a bathroom out by the pool. So we have not planned for bathrooms right at the pool, but within the facility, the main bathrooms within the facility.
And, and they are accessible from the outside, from, they would be direct, there is a corridor that would lead to those bathrooms from the outside from the pool area, right, Jerry?
Yeah, I might add that actually they're accessible from both sides, north and west.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Um, I don't know. I've got a bunch of old men living there. You're going to want a restroom out there, that's my feeling.
Commissioner Hirschbein, could I add or help on this condition? The applicant is saying that they will meet the requirements of Riverside County Health requirement. I believe when it comes to apartment housing, that you are required to have a public restroom. If the furthest unit is beyond so many feet, and it's along the principle of what you have been saying, that it's, it's nice to have a public restroom within so many feet. So therefore, if we have the requirement that the project should meet the Riverside County Health requirement, I believe that will cover your concerns.
Well, I don't have to put a condition in there that they have to comply with laws or codes. That's, I don't have to do that.
That's correct.
Uh, I don't know. I, if, I'm making that to the people that are making the motion. If you accept it, fine. If you don't, you don't.
Commissioner Marutse?
You know, I mean, I personally like having a restroom nearby when I'm out by the pool. I don't like going inside a building to have to go to the restroom when you're wet or, you know, whatever. But, you know, I don't know enough about the details of what is typical or appropriate for apartment buildings with this demographic. You know, I just, I don't know, it just seems like we're, we're asking them to do something that they seem to have thought through, but I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, I'm sorry.
I, I'm not going to add the condition. So the motion doesn't have that condition. And we've revised, do we still have a condition that the, the ends be as consistent, that at least the two be as consistent as possible? No. So that's withdrawn. So the motion's before us unless anybody has anything else to add. Can you call the roll?
Um, Chair Wilmuk? Oh.
No, no one either, can we?
Uh, Joe Lan?
Yes, I said Chair Wilmuk.
Can you call the roll?
Yes, I am, and you said the first one, the main emotion would be called first. Oh, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Chair Wilmuk?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marutse?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
And Commissioner Song?
The motion carries five to one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Beating Riddle. Does anybody need a break? Are we fine? To B, Anza P S L L C requesting a one-year extension of time for a major architectural application to construct a two-story, 10,504-square-foot industrial warehouse building located at 3573 North Anza Road. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could, most of the Planning Commission was not part of the, was on the commission back in 2018 when this was approved, so I'll go over some of the, the background information so we all have a place to start from. So this project was originally approved back in February of 28, I'm sorry, in September of 2018. And to orient as to where we are looking at, the, the, the project is at the industrial park area that is west of Indian Canyon Drive and north of San Rafael. If you remember, last meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed a cell tower, and that was at this lot. Well, we are now looking at the lot that is in the red rectangle off of Radio Road. So the lot is approximately 15,000 square feet, and what they're proposing to build is a two-story warehouse, 10,504 square feet total. So the Planning Commission approved a major architectural back in 2018 to construct the square foot warehouse. The Planning Commission also approved a conditional use permit to allow cannabis cultivation. Soon after the Planning Commission approved the project, it was called up to council for review. The city council held two meetings on December 5th and 19th of 2018, and there was no action taken at that time. Soon after, a moratorium was put in place to prevent cultivation within the central parts of the city. The zoning code was amended relative to cultivation to allow it only on the north, north of the I-10 in the green zone. And then the applicant applied for a building permit on July 18th of 2019 to construct the 10,000-square-foot warehouse. So that is the, the background for the project. And going through some slides, the, the Planning Commission approved this design of a two-story building with parking along the street, Radio Road, and on the south portion of the lot. The slide that's before you today is for a, to have a floor plan that includes a cannabis lounge and dispensary and distribution on the second floor. There's floor plans that show how the dispensary and, and the lounge will be located. To refresh the Planning Commission's memory of how these cannabis applications are approved, the M1 zone allows a dispensary and a lounge and distribution as a by right use. So there is no further action that was needed by the Planning Commission to approve the dispensary or the lounge. The applicant did go forward and obtain a regulatory permit from the city, and we have on the Zoom call our, our special programs director and also our odor control consultant if questions should arise. So when the dispensary was approved and the lounge through the regulatory permit, an odor control plan was reviewed and approved. So that is the background information for the project. So the Planning Commission would need to approve a one-year time extension to construct the two-story building in order for the project to move forward. In your packet, there are, there's a letter from the applicant who describes what has been done over the past two years in order to advance the project. So the applicant states that they've spent over $100,000 in doing design work and other activities in order to advance the project. So in your staff report, there are conditions of approval that the Planning Commission would need to make in order to make the findings. There are specific ones for a time extension. So are, has they made substantial efforts in advancing the project? So they have included receipts and copies of checks of building permit applications. They've also done street improvement plans, a precise grading plan, a WQMP, which is a water quality management plan, and other itemized items that are shown in their packet. They're saying that obstacles have, have prevented the project from moving forward, having to do with property ownership. The first application for the cannabis business was temporarily suspended due to the moratorium, and that delayed the project from moving forward. They've contracted with Sky Can LLC as the operator of the business and has allowed the project to progress based upon the documentation provided. So they have made some efforts to advance the project, and a building permit is in, was submitted. However, that permit has expired, and they would need to renew the, a building permit application. So Chair, in your packet, there are... So Chair, in your packet, there are, uh, a resolution, and then, as I mentioned, the letter from the applicant and then their background information. So that concludes my report, and we can have the applicant join us when you, when you like.
Uh, questions for staff? Uh, Commissioner Song, and then I have a question.
Yes, uh, Glenn, the question is, when there was a moratorium, did their application time stop, or did it still continue ticking? And, uh, I apologize if you already talked that.
So what happened? So what happened was is that the, the property owner who was building the warehouse had an operator who obtained the cannabis cultivation license. Um, that, that operator, right after the planning commission approved, the CUP and the major architectural withdrew that license. So they were no longer in the picture. So the applicant had approval to build the warehouse but didn't have a cannabis cultivation operator. Uh, and the moratorium went into place, and the city would not accept any new applications to do cannabis cultivation. So he was stuck in the middle, basically.
Uh, other questions? Uh, Glenn, do, uh, I understand under the new ordinance that there are distance requirements. Uh, what's the saturation of cannabis in this area? And are there distance issues? That we, we should be aware of?
So the, the, there is a separation distance requirement between dispensaries, and the regulatory permit reviewed the, the nearest dispensary, which is farther down the street. It's called Joy of Life, and it is beyond the 500-foot. And the, and, um, Ms. Goodheart may be able to respond to that better than I could.
And then the other question, of course, to respond to that, um, the material said that their reason for, um, for not following through was that their architect was sick. Uh, can you talk a little bit about that? But I'm asking you about that.
Uh, right. If you're, um, well, some commission members were present, uh, at that time in 2018. There, there was an, um, a project architect who, um, who had some health issues, and in order to get the permits submitted, they needed the architect to do construction documents and so forth, and he was unable to do that. So, once again, that may be a question of the applicant.
Thank you. And Ms. Goodheart here to answer his questions? Commissioner, uh, after she answers it, and then I'll get to Commissioner Lewin.
Could you repeat the question?
It's a question of the saturation in that district with cannabis?
Um, the distance requirement only applies to dispensaries. So while there are, um, so there's some cultivation and manufacturing surrounding them, there's no other dispensaries.
Can you, can you, do you have a, a map that can show us where the cult, where the cannabis is in that, in that district?
Um, if, the, the overview, I, the, the building directly next to.
Robert, if I could get the slides back up. So in this slide, there is a cannabis cultivation facility right next door at 367. There are also cannabis uses across the street cultivation. Uh, and what's not shown on this slide is farther down, um, this is Oasis, is where the Joy of Life dispensary is, the one that's farther than 500 feet away.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Glenn, could you just explain that what happened? There was a moratorium for a period of time. This applicant kind of got stuck in a gap there, it sounds like, but then ultimately they were approved? Is that what happened?
The, yes, the planning commission approved the major architectural and the CUP to approve cultivation.
Okay. So after that, they were approved and they're just seeking an extension at this point? Thank you.
Right. The planning commission is, if, if you could separate the two out, the planning commission is, will you approve a time extension to build the 10,000-square-foot warehouse building?
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Irvin, and then Commissioner Hirschhorn?
Yeah, so, um, so this project will have cultivation as well as a dispensary? Or am I just?
The, the project will, is only for a dispensary and a lounge and manufacturing and distribution. There's no cultivation. No, I'm sorry, not, not manufacturing, distribution.
So, so distribution and, and, um, dispensary? And what else did you say?
A dispensary, lounge, and distribution.
And so, um, for the dispensary part of that, you said it's only one dispensary over there? And for the cultivation, how many cultivations are in that location?
If you can put the slide back up.
Okay, well, um, so there's no cultivation at this, at this facility. Next door is, um, Kings Garden has cultivation at 367 Radio Road, and there's other cultivation across the street at Del Sol.
So, so this, this project that is going to be approved doesn't have any smell?
The, um, Ms. Goodheart can, and we have our odor, odor control consultant on the line, if.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I guess I'll say another question.
If we could bring Ms. Goodheart back?
Hello?
Yes, if you could answer the questions about odor that Commissioner Irvin had, please?
Yeah, absolutely. There is, uh, through the city of Palm Springs and the new revised ordinance, there are two pathways for compliance. One pathway is for cultivation and manufacturing, which is considered high-impact odor activity. And the secondary pathway is for lounges, dispensaries, and distribution, which are considered low to moderate-impact odor activities. In general, the licensing delivered from Nate for packaging or for distribution and dispensaries requires the product to be sealed, uh, before it shows up on site. So you are not seeing any processing, you're not seeing any. Seeing no cultivation. It is reasonable to assume there would be a significantly lower odor impact for a distribution and, uh, dis, or distribution and dispensary and lounge facility versus cultivation.
Commissioner Irvin, do you have more questions?
Uh, no. No.
Commissioner Lewin? And I think Commissioner Hirschhorn had his hand up, so I can't see everybody right now. Oh, Commissioner Hirschhorn, you were next.
Um, so it sounds like what they're kind of hanging their hat on is the fact that, um, uh, the cultivation went away. We were no, Palm Springs is no longer allowing cultivation, and therefore, the deal with the previous operator fell through. And then they were looking for an operator that would only, would, would be okay with only having, uh, distribution, dispensary, and lounge. And they found one with Skycan, and that's allowed them to proceed with, with the project. So my question is, when did they make the deal with Skycan?
The, the application for the regulatory permit was issued last year, so it's been at least a year.
A year since they made the deal with Sky?
And the applicant may be able to tell you exactly when they, um, they started their negotiations with the property owner, but the regulatory permit was issued on July 15th of 2020. So, um, one can assume that they were spending some time, um, preparing to submit the application.
But you, you don't have any deal with Skycan, do you?
I'm sorry, you were breaking up?
Do you have any knowledge of when they did the deal with Skycan?
I do not. Veronica can answer that.
Yeah, I'd like to know that. They're telling us they can go forward with the Skycan deal, and I'd like to know how long ago they made that Skycan deal.
The application, um, for Skycan was received in December of 2019. So, uh, December 30th, 2019 is when we received the application. They started, um, making inquiries regarding the project probably, um, a month prior. So that's when we became aware they're working together.
So, 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 Skycan, a party to this deal as an operator of the property, of the facility since at least December of last year. So, so they, it's been a year since they, they've had the operator in place without moving forward with the building construction. Is that right?
Correct. That's, I think they were waiting to make sure the approval was granted, and the cannabis was approved in, uh, July 2020.
Okay, so it took six months for them to get your approval? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because they have to go through background, lounge use, odor control. So there's a series of steps they have to go through before we issue it.
Okay. And as far as, uh, staff, going back to Glenn, since July of this year, what, what have they done to further?
So the main activity was done soon after the planning commission first approved the project. So the building permit application came in, uh, in July of 2019. So that, there were several correction notices, and then the, um, there was no more activity on the, the building permit side. So, um, it's been no action or movement, um, since they, uh, that building permit expired.
So.
What was the expiration date?
A building permit is good for six months after it's approved or it's in process. So, um, there were several corrections. So it was July 18th of 2019 that they applied for the building permit, uh, you know, six months after that. So, um, early 2020 is when the, um, activity ended, which would have been around the time that they went into agreement with Skycan.
Okay, but they, they agreed with Skycan on 2019 for operating life. They had to approve the license in July of this year, and since July of this year, they haven't done anything.
Uh, no, they, they submitted their, their request for time extension in October. And it's taken us this amount of time to get it on an agenda.
No, right. But since July this year, it, we're asking for an extension, they haven't done anything.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Glenn, I, I think one of the things that really got me stumped, and I, I'd just like to hear you comment. Page four of the staff report says really clearly, under the project description, is for the construction of a new two-story, 10,000-square-foot cannabis cultivation building. And, um.
That, that's incorrect. Um, I apologize.
Okay. That's really been driving me crazy. So it is definitely not cannabis cultivation. The odor issue is not there. It is a dispensary and lounge. And I just want to make sure that, that I understand this correctly. So I don't have any further questions, uh, of staff. Thank you.
Uh, are there any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Irvin?
So, um, I guess I would ask, what is the normal, um, process that it would take to get it, uh, done? It, it seems like it's been sitting, um, for, since July, and then they found, uh, someone who was willing in 2019. How long is the normal process that it, that it takes to get that done?
To get a building permit and start construction?
Yeah, just, just the basic outline of how, how long it takes to complete the process.
Uh, well, from a building permit standpoint and all the engineering requirements as far as grading permits and water quality management reviews, it, it's at least six months.
So would you say that they are right on schedule with, um, the timeline and the timeframe that they've put in place?
No, I would say that they're behind.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Uh, can we open the public hearing? The applicant has 10 minutes to make a presentation, uh, speaking to the, the reasons for the extension.
Um, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so my name is Tizina Chakma, and I, um, I've been working on this project, uh, together with the property owners, and, and we're working towards completing this project. Um, so we're asking, we're here today to ask for a time extension for the major architectural approval, um, to build the already, uh, approved building, the warehouse. Uh, we are not asking for a time extension of the conditional use permit as the approved uses, um, uh, dispensary, distribution, and lounge does not require a conditional use permit. Um, so I want to, I want to make it super clear that, um, there will be no cultivation of cannabis on the property. Um, so the, therefore, the, it will be limited, um, the odor control will be very much controlled and limited. Um, so why we're in need of this time extension is pretty much, um, a lot of circumstances that, that, that was beyond our control to, um, to move forward and complete this project with, with the conditions of approval. Um, first of all, COVID, when COVID hit in March, everything shut down. It was difficult for us to, um, have engineers and architects, um, go to the property and look at it and start, uh, working. So COVID delayed this project pretty much, um, a lot. Um, and during that time, we were still waiting for the, the regulatory permit to be approved. We were working on that, um, when COVID hit. And on top of that, our architect that was connected to this project from the start, 2018 even before that, he got very sick and was, he was not able to help us meet the deficiencies for, during a couple of months, even, even today, it's been hard to, uh, reach out to him and obtain the, the already-approved renderings and, and plans. Um, so that delayed the project a lot as well. Um, one more, uh, the original owners of, of the property, um, they, they face some, some financial issues in, uh, keeping the property during the moratorium, um, and then during the, uh, the limbo time, when, when the, when the, uh, moratorium was lifted, the new zoning regulations prohibited cannabis cultivation in that, uh, zone. And the property is located in, um, M1 zone where you cannot, um, cultivate cannabis anymore. So during that time, um, they faced the financial issues, and that's when the new development group came in to take over the property pretty much and the project. And the new development group, um, that's both Anza PS, the property owner, and the PS LLC, the property owner, and Skycan LLC. the property owner, and Sky Cam LLC. ANZAPS is obviously the property owner, and Sky Cam will be the cannabis business operator. So this new development group has, is better suited financially to actually complete this project, and we have extensive, extensive experience in cannabis projects, and we've completed many cannabis projects prior to this. However, I would like to note that the original owner is staying on and assisting us to meet the conditions of approval and constructing the building. So he is staying on to assist us, you know, get this project over the finish line. So now that we have overcome all of those hurdles, we feel confident that we will be able to finish this project within the time extension, which will be another 10 months until October 2021 if approved. We have also hired new engineers and hired a new design group to complete all outstanding deficiencies and to meet all outstanding conditions of approval. And this new design group that we've hired, they have extensive, extensive experience in cannabis projects and have designed cannabis projects specifically for three years since the legalization of cannabis in California, and has successfully completed around 30 cannabis projects, and has worked with us on about 10 cannabis projects. So we trust in their work. We trust that they will help us finish this project within the extension.
If I could, I'll introduce myself. I'm David Welch. I'm the applicant, also the person who the regulatory permit was issued to. I'm an attorney. I've been practicing for 14 years, 14, it drags on. But my expertise has been in cannabis. So I'll give you some background on the timing, so we can have the facts out there. I was originally brought on, and my firm was originally brought on, to help bring this project to fruition and apply for this permit in December with the original owners. The original owners ran into financial trouble in 2019 and into 2020. So I stepped in to take over the project and invest in the project. And eventually, the deal was that if we were to get the regulatory permit, which we did in July, that I would then come in and buy the property and then take over the project and build the building. I brought in a longtime partner of mine, who's a shallow levee from Santa Monica. Not that that means anything, but together we developed over a million square feet of cannabis space in the state of California. And that is in, either in Southern California, San Francisco, and down to Orange County. This project is our current project. We have other projects that are cannabis cultivation in Santa Barbara, but we think this project is a great project that we can add a lot to. The delays in this project were really based upon us finalizing our deal with the previous owners and making sure that we were going to obtain our regulatory permit. Once we retained our regulatory permit, we had to find a new architect. We brought on Ms. Donna Adams, who's here and can speak to it. She's worked with us on various projects, and a lot of our delay was getting the other paperwork that we did not have as of yet. The previous owner, who was helping us through this project, provided us that documentation, and we were, over the last few months, putting it together. And so I wanted to address some questions that were put out there. But the project, I stepped in, and when the project or regulatory permit was finalized, and our deal closed really in August of this, well, actually, just around August this year.
Right, so just like David said, we came in pretty late to the project, and there was a question about what we have been doing since July, since we got the regulatory permit approved. We have been obtaining the previous drawings, renderings, and plans from the previous engineer, the architect. And like I said before, it has been tough to get in contact with either of those. So once, from July up until now, we actually been working on hiring good people, trustworthy people, that will help us finish this project. And we have all the confidence in the world that we will be able to do so in the upcoming months. If I'm going to move forward, I know that the Palm Springs Municipal Code set for some requirements for a time extension, and I would just quick, I would just like to quickly talk about those requirements and how we meet those requirements. So first of all, the MAJ is consistent with the general plan. The property is located in a mixed-use, land-use designation, which you may know includes professional offices and service businesses. And the proposed building is properly zoned for the proposed users, and the intended goals of the land use designation is still valid. So we're still very much consistent with the general plan of the location. The project's layout, design, and overall scope has not been changed since the findings in the original MAJ application, so they still remain valid and appropriate. We have not changed much to, in this project. The main change is that we removed cultivation from the proposed use, which is actually, which actually makes the project more sensible in this area on this property. Just like I said, there has been no significant changes to the project. Once we removed the cultivation use, the SEQA analysis was no longer required. However, we already paid, I think around $12,000 for a SEQA consultant to do that analysis. It is no longer needed for our project, as cultivation is completely removed. It's not allowed in the M1 zoning. And on top of that, there has been no new information concerning environmental effects that would make this project less appropriate for the location. We have made sure to, you know...
Madam Chair, I would just note that the 10-minute timer is up if the commission would like to let the applicant continue beyond their 10 minutes. That is up to the commission.
Are there any members of the public who've requested to speak?
No, Madam Chair, there have been none.
I will give you three more minutes for rebuttal or leave it to the commission to ask questions. You have three minutes of rebuttal to finish up.
Okay, I'll be quick. I just wanted to let you know that we have maintained the property even though not much has been going on. We have no active court enforcement cases against the property. The property is well-maintained, it's clean, there's no trash. We have put up a fence around the property, and we'll make sure, we'll maintain the fence as long as needed. We have submitted, timely submitted drawings, grading plans, street improvement plan, and water quality plans. And all of these plans are now in a deficiency state, and that's why we have hired new professionals to help us meet those deficiencies and complete those plans. And like Glenn said before, we have invested around $100,000 on this project already, and that does not include the new professionals we have hired. The engineer we have hired is better suited. He's well-known. He has been working in Palm Springs for a long time. He was already up at the property last week to start working. So yeah, I feel very confident that we will be able to complete this project. Thank you very much.
Do commissioners have questions of the applicant before I close the public hearing? Commissioner Song?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ms. Chakma, you mentioned that with this extension, you will have about 10 months to complete the project. Do you have an estimated project schedule?
I think our architect is better to answer that. I know that the requested services we have requested is on expedited, it's expedited, so the engineer is already working, and the architect group, the design group, has already started, commenced the work as well.
Hi, I'm Donna Adams, and yes, we are the design firm that we're working with them. And we've been asked to review what they currently have, and we're already in the process of making the changes that are necessary to be able to do the initial submittal for the planning and understanding of the facade, all elevations, the floor plan that meets all the zoning, and also the BCC, the state requirements. Once we do that, then of course, the next phase with, that also includes all the materialities, so you guys can understand how the building will look in the context of the industrial park. And the engineering will also follow suit at that time. So if you're asking roughly for a timeline, we can do all that and submit to the city within six weeks. The actual initial part of the design, and if you guys understand the elevations and the proper floor plan, we can submit that to you guys within two weeks. And I just also want to say thank you for your time and consideration. You know, I know that, and understanding, because I know that this, this project has, listening to it, has had definitely a roller coaster ride, but we genuinely feel that with the lounge and the way that we're setting up the dispensary, it's going to be a lovely space for the community to be able to go and convene and relax. And it will definitely be a benefit instead of the cultivation.
Ms. Jimero, I believe the set of plans have been submitted, and you even have a building application. Aren't you planning to redraw those plans and submit them again to the building department?
Yes, we have to revise them, because there is some revisions necessary to comply with state regulations. And also, we really want to incorporate a really beautiful facade from the previous designers.
So you're changing the design of the previous approved plan?
No, just the facade, just to make it a more harmonious exterior. So, but nothing major, it's very minor. It's just to make sure that we comply with all state and city regulations.
Okay, so if I'm hearing correctly, you would like to submit a revised concept package to the city, and then after that gets approved, then you will submit it for building plan check review?
That is correct.
And then you will receive permit, and then after that, you will begin construction?
Correct.
So maybe this question is for Mr. Welch. What is your project schedule for approval, building permit, getting a contractor, and getting this project constructed?
We've hired a contractor that is based in Chino. It's a contractor that we've worked with before on other projects. We've, I would tell you this, I need to talk with the architect, but I do think that we can move forward on this project. One thing we have to do is resubmit our building permit plans, which, as you're aware, need to be revised. And so I'm hoping that we can, our goal is to break ground on this project as soon as we get approval. I know that we hope to finish completion within nine months.
So what's your estimated time for construction?
Based on, and I'll defer to the architect on that, Donna, if you have an estimate on construction?
Well, once the official permits are approved, then obviously you can break ground. So realistically, I mean, it is a brand-new build, so I would say a good six to seven months. So the nine-month timeframe that you're mentioning is definitely a viable timeframe.
And one final question. So all your engineering and architectural plans are being redone because you have a brand-new engineer and architect team?
No, no, they're not going to be completely redone. We have a lot of work that we spent, or time that was spent on the original plans. I think Ms. Adams was saying that she will make some small revisions to the plans to comply with state laws.
Okay, so you are going to have the original stamped engineers finish up the plan. You're not having a brand-new engineering team redoing your plans?
That's correct. So we have architect on board, we have our new construction project manager, new construction company, and we will go with the plans already engineered as it stands today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirsch, fine.
So you've hired a contractor, and they haven't told you how long it's going to take to build the building?
No, Commissioner, that's not the case. The issue here is that the building, this is a building that was already approved. It was a steel building, one of the few that was approved by the planning commission. And so we just had, got them on board, and so they've given us an estimate based on what they've seen and what they've done in the past. And that's why I gave the nine-month estimate.
So they gave that to you, the nine months?
That was my discussions with them, yes.
Okay, but I have a question. I think this might be for staff, and it just occurred to me. What are we giving an extension?
Hold on a second. Questions for staff, we can go back to, I wanted, this is just questions for the applicant, or otherwise I will close the public hearing. So are there more questions for the applicant? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. The matter is before the commission. Commissioner Hirsch, fine, you can ask your questions.
Thank you. What are we asking, what are we being asked to extend? And what is the end of that extension? In other words, is it one year to get a building permit? Is it one year to start construction? Is it one year to open the facility? What is it one year for?
So the one-year time extension is for the major architectural, and that would go until October 9th, 2021. So within, by October 9th, 2021, they would have to have a grading permit to actually start digging in the ground. That would cement the approvals in place. If that is not, does not occur by then, then they'll have to come back and ask for another time extension.
So what would satisfy the, I guess, satisfy the processes if they had a grading permit by October 21, or whatever it is, then their issue of time extensions goes away?
I'm sorry, building permit and grading permit, they both need.
They would need a building permit, grading permit by October of 2021 within that timeframe?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
General comments on this? Commissioner Lewin?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think this applicant is deserving of a time extension. It's a one-year time extension. They've clearly encountered a number of very unfortunate mishaps with moratoriums, change of use, sick architect, and we have COVID. I hope that we can move this on as a matter of course and let them get a shot at completing the project out there. My main issue was whether it was in violation of the moratorium on cultivation. That's clearly been dealt with, so I'll be in favor of supporting this. Thank you.
I will just make a comment that I'm not. I don't think I can make finding number six in terms of extenuating circumstances. What I really heard was that there were financial difficulties, and financial difficulties really aren't extenuating circumstances in terms of our extensions. And sick architects aren't either, because architects can be replaced fairly easily. So the financial difficulties of the previous owner look like they've caused this issue. I'm not, I'm not going to be able to vote in favor of the extension. Commissioner Song?
Commissioner Song?
Uh, yes. I would like to ask the question to Glenn, is in July of 2020, was there any correspondence from the applicant to the city to express their conditions, their issues that they, or challenges that they were?
Yes, there has been discussions with the previous property owner, Mr. Gilbert, for the past two years. When the moratorium happened and sort of the period when he didn't have an operator, there was long discussions with him as to what he could do with the building if he built it as a warehouse. And so to answer your question shortly, yes, there has been discussions with them throughout the past two years.
And the second question, Glenn, is that if the extension is not approved, and the applicant still wants to continue, they will have to submit a brand new application?
Yes, that is an option, that they could resubmit a major architectural application. This is similar to, the Planning Commission recently saw the Legacy Project, which was the assisted living facility. They, that lapsed, they reapplied for a new major architectural, and the Planning Commission approved it, and then they came in and asked for a time extension after that. So that would be a similar situation.
Okay, thank you. I, I would support the extension. We, um, every, every, this COVID has really made an impact. And to also let the applicant know that please verify with the building department, as well, there have been limited staff and the processing of plans have taken longer than usual. So these are the circumstances that we're facing. And we hope that, you know, things will get back to normal. But you do need to do some additional research and understand how much longer things are taking during these times. So I'll be in support of the extension.
Other comments?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion if there's no comments.
Your motion is?
To approve the extension as presented by staff.
Um, is there a second?
I have a second.
Are there any comments to the motion? Seeing none, will you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
No.
Sorry? No, okay. Vice Chairman Ruzy?
Yes.
And Chair Wermuth?
You missed Commissioner Hirschbein.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hirschbein?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay. And Chair Wermuth, thank you.
No.
Okay. Order two.
The motion passes for two.
Um, moving right along. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Uh, two C is West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation for a planned development district application to construct a 71-unit multifamily residential development on a 1.76 acre site located at the southwest corner of West Stevens Road and North Palm Canyon. This project will be, I will need a motion, and I will make a motion to extend this to a date certain, which will be January 13th, 2021. The project encountered some issues that need resolution. It will be going to City Council the following day on the 20, on the 14th of January. I am to make sure that we can get the package and deal with the issues in a way that is expedited. I'm going to appoint a subcommittee to work with me on this project. The issues that we'll be looking at are parking access, parking, parking ratios, and uses, ground floor uses. Commissioner Hirschbein has volunteered to be on the subcommittee. We will be working with City Councilperson Coors, who is on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee of the City Council. And I have not yet confirmed whether Mayor Holstage will be joining us in this subcommittee. We will be attending a neighbor, there will be an additional neighborhood meeting that the subcommittee will be expected to attend through Zoom. And you will be receiving additional materials on the project that go toward uses and go toward resolution of parking issues. So I've made a motion, I don't know if I can get a second?
I have a second.
Um, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Can you call the roll, please? Uh, Chair Wermuth?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Ruzy?
Yes.
Okay, six zero. Thank you very much. Okay, Planning Commission reports requests and comments. Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't want to keep us later than necessary, but I, I was reflecting on some of the things that happened in our, in the previous meeting. And I had some questions for staff and some questions for our fellow commissioners. We seem to get a number of cell phone towers that come before us. And what I've noticed is that every applicant says they cannot co-locate with any other tower. And we seem to be taking the applicant at their word. And I wondered if the commission wanted the city itself to express, express an opinion as to what the policy should be around cell phone towers, co-location, when it is and is not appropriate, so that we're not kind of dealing with this in an ad hoc manner. And I wondered, I want to throw that out for our fellow commissioners, if we're interested in asking the city to do that, or if we should continue to deal with these as they arise. And then my other question had to do specifically with the cell phone tower that we approved last time. Maybe Glenn, you can tell us. It was on a vacant lot on Radio Road. And I, it's been bothering me ever since. Would we have been able to condition that the sidewalk be improved on that vacant lot as a condition of that cell phone tower being constructed? And Glenn, do you know what I'm even talking about, given all the work you do?
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner Glenn has actually left the chamber. So I can answer your question, Commissioner Lewin. So typically, when we have cell towers, I believe our practice has been that the off-site improvements, like the sidewalk and the curb and gutters, et cetera, those have typically been deferred to covenant or just not required, given the extent of the request. And, you know, it would change depending on the circumstances for each property. One of the ones that comes to mind where you have like three cell towers on a property is off of Vista Chino and Sahara Road. That is a property that is, was a vacant property. It was developed with three cell towers over time. They, they did some onsite improvements relative to landscaping to provide some buffer of the, of the facilities relative to the surrounding area. And in that case, they didn't require a sidewalk, but this street and the curb is currently improved there. And each, as I said, each site's going to be different. Some sites we have are in shopping centers where they, they already have all of the onsite improvements and sidewalks along the street. But in terms of what your comment was about the co-location and maybe having some direction on that, the way our zoning code is written is it, it really does incentivize people to co-locate in that typically it's an administrative process for staff to approve those requests. If, if it's not, then what you see is what, what you have seen recently is what we typically get are, you know, conditional use permit applications to establish a new tower. So in terms of our zoning code, it does incentivize it. What we might look at doing is for new towers, I know we have a condition that says, you know, the applicant shall consider co-location, but we might want to strengthen our CUPs to suggest or state that new towers shall be designed and constructed to accommodate other antennas so that that issue doesn't come up. Because that's typically an argument we've seen recently or in recent years, is that these cell towers say they can't locate, co-locate on an existing tower because it wasn't built to handle their equipment.
Thank you, David. So maybe if we could, at, at a future date, not tonight, come up with maybe a best practice for this topic? I would feel better than just taking the word of an applicant each time. And I went, I didn't really hear your answer entirely, David. Could we, I, I really think about that one particular lot. It's got a sidewalk on both sides and it stops right where that lot is. Could we have conditioned it, that CUP with the sidewalk improvement, if we thought it was necessary for the public good?
Yeah, I don't think that it would have been an issue for that property, considering the, it's not, you know, four sides of the property that were requiring improvements. It was only a portion of the property. You know, we could make an argument that there is a legal nexus to the extent that, you know, there's, this is a new project. You know, it's, has an frontage on there that could use improvements to develop the site properly. So I think possibly, yeah, that would be something we could require.
Thank you. And then the, the last comment I have from my fellow commissioners is, Commissioner Song, you, you brought up something, I, I couldn't have agreed with you more about the issue of the parking on the building, the, the senior living building. And I wish we had just been more clear in the previous meeting that we wanted to see that alternative. So I really just want to say, I, I really valued what you had to say, but the reason I voted the way I did was I, I really wanted this project to finally get built after so much time. So I hope next time this comes up, we can be super clear that we want to see that. And I appreciate the vote that you took, and I understand why you did it. That's it, commissioners, I hope you have a good new year.
Uh, just in response to cell towers, as 4G comes up, 4G will require many more cell towers than we currently have. And they will probably be, they'll be more frequent, but they might be on light poles. And so at some point, as we're beginning to see 4 and 5G technology, we actually need new ordinances to cover that technology. And it's, it's coming very quickly, so it's probably something staff should begin to think about.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Well, yeah, just along those lines. Um, you know, when we had trouble figuring out the whole odor issue with cannabis, we had our own consultant talk to us. And I think it would be a good idea to have a, an engineer that's, you know, used to designing these facilities independently hired by the, by the city to understand what it would take to co-locate a 4G or 5G tower. And then use that information for the, for the proposed ordinance.
Commissioner Song?
I'd like to figure out on that because that may already require for the tower to be, I'm going to exaggerate, 80 feet. And therefore, it would be great if we can understand what the consequences are so that when we do review the application, we can see that co-mingling requires this height. And for every one of them, it's going to require an amendment. Or do we keep it so that every project becomes, comes in front of us? Because we do want to see it, and we do want an amendment. I think those, those would be questions to ask and be able to understand what will be the standard and the visual impact on the new technology. And just two more things is that I, I wish I can have the fortitude to have the right observation at the right time. So I can't promise that I will perform precisely better, but I will try my best.
We could have been clearer. Commissioner Ruzy?
Well, change the subject. Former Mayor Coors would quarterly ask for a report on the status of certain projects, such as ANDAS or Tova or others. I don't know if the new mayor is going to ask for that, but if not, I'd like to get an update. At least the public could hear something about what's going on. And those two projects are lingering, to put it mildly, compared to other projects that are now going forward, which I'm pleased to see. A lot of them are actually moving forward that have been sitting idle for quite some time. But those two, I, I think the public is very interested in, and so am I. So I don't want to put anybody on the spot now because I know our, the attorney that I asked this of last time is not here.
Commissioner Irvin?
I also want to mention too, the Tower Market was approved. The City Council approved the Tower Market. They made a little bit of alter to what the percentages of food versus alcohol. So that project was approved.
Fairly close to the SNAP requirements that we suggested. I think they ended up with 45%. Fifteen, was it 20, 20 and 20, 15 and 20, or 30? I'm not sure, was it 45 or 50% food?
I think it was, I think it was 40% food, and I think it was either 15 or 20% alcohol. I think it might have been 10 or 15% alcohol.
I think we could ask our assistant, our planning director or assistant planning director for, for what exactly happened at council. Uh, moving from this to the planning directors.
Yeah, Madam Chair and commissioners, at the December 10th City Council meeting, as you mentioned, the council did approve the Tower Energy Group, the Tower Market applications. They did specifically require 30% for staple foods, 15% for perishable goods, fruits, vegetables, et cetera, and fresh meats. So there was a total of 45% between those two. And then there was a maximum requirement of 20% of alcohol display sale area. They strengthened the conditions to require, to require that not only are those items, or those areas, or the display areas to have those there, that they have to have those display areas, but they also have to stock those display areas with those, with those goods. They also had some conditions related to the design of the project, moving the building further north slightly, adding an outdoor seating area, and improving the lighting fixtures and the lighting of the building. So they did approve that project. Also, on their meeting was the DAP campus expansion, and the City Council did approve that project as well. So those were really the two items that the council considered. So those were really the two items that the council considered on December 10th related to matters you've seen recently.
With DAP, they approved it with a requirement that either there be a traffic signal or that there be a complete blocking of the ability of pedestrians to cross the road. At that point, the traffic engineer indicated that cutouts wouldn't do it. There'd be to cross the road. At that point, the traffic engineer indicated that cutouts wouldn't do it. There'd be no way anybody could cross the road without a signalized light. So they, they did have that amendment of an either-or amendment.
That's correct, yes. They did require that either a barrier or barricade be installed in the median or provide a traffic light. So that was a condition of their approval. Related to our calendar next year, I believe you all got a copy of our meeting schedule. So I just wanted to point you in the direction of that, if there's questions about our meetings next year. So you have a copy of that and we'll be able to plan your vacations accordingly, if you're going anywhere. And so I think that's it, unless the Director of FAG has any additional comments.
No. No, I don't have any additional comments, Madam Chair.
For the next City Council, are the only two items that are relevant to Planning Commission decisions, the Virgin Parcel Site and the Agave Project, is that correct?
Sorry, I missed your question.
The next council meeting. At the next council meeting, the city will be taking up the Virgin Parcel Site?
That's, yeah, that's correct. They have that tentatively scheduled for their agenda. They also have a couple of Class 1 and 2 designations that they'll be looking at. But as far as hearing notices or public hearing items, it would be the Agave Project and the Block B1 Residential Project.
Block B1 Residential is?
The former Virgin Hotel site.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would just, I'd let you know that our attorney, Todd Leishman, has a comment, I think, about the Tova Hotel.
Ah, thank you.
Chair and Commissioners, Jim Priest, the attorney from BDK that you're probably used to seeing at this meeting, he did anticipate Commissioner Murucy's question about the Tova Hotel. And so today I checked with Jeff Ballinger and he assured me that, he said, let them know that we are proceeding with obtaining a demolition warrant and we are working through the bankruptcy court as well. So I wanted to share that with you since you asked.
What about the other hotel sites? The former Dream Hotel and?
I will make note of that. I was not briefed on notes, but I will gladly pass that on and we'll get you an update. Did you say it was the Dream Hotel?
I'm not sure what it's currently called. It was a site, a hotel that's partially built across from the convention center. And then the hotel that, the Hyatt, the potential Hyatt Andaz Hotel is also partially built and stopped.
I will get updates on, well, I will pass that on and we will get you an update. Thank you.
Flynn, does, does our computer system now allow you to provide data for us on the status of projects that were previously approved?
No, we are not quite there yet, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned until, I'm adjourning this meeting until Wednesday, January 13th at 5:00 in 2021 at 5:30. I wish you all the happiest of holidays and see you then.
Same to you.
See you next year.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Thanks to staff and Flynn, bye.